Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Black Hawk County Board of Supervisors for July 8th, 2025. Roll call please.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Hall. Curtinback?
Here.
Leyland?
Here.
Would anyone please join us for a moment of silence since we reflect on our actions here at this. Please join us with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flyer of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item one is the agenda received or proposed or amended.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Thanks, Senator. Thank you. The agenda is received. Item two is public comments. Is there anyone here today that would like to speak in public comments, something that is not on today's agenda? Please give your name and address.
My name is Mike Mush. I live at 303 First Street in Washburn. I'm assuming that the roads through Washburn are called our residential streets and not county roads. And because of that, there's frontage on all the roads through town that I'm assuming that you cannot store boats, trailers, whatever. If we go, we do a lot of things through the city of Waterloo, it's code enforcement, permits, variances and all of that. So I'm assuming this would fall under that same thing, that you can't park in the parking or store things in the parking. If you come down the Port Road and turn onto Maple Street to come into Washburn, the first house that you come to, there's a a big old boat sitting along in the parking that's been stored there. It's about a foot off the road. I'm just wondering if there's something we can do about that to make him move it. It used to be in his driveway. Now it's out of his driveway on the parking. Is, can we do anything? And if we can't do anything, what do we do about it? Do we have World of Code Enforcement come out? What, or is it, is it legal for him to park in the parking? Because we're not in the city of Waterloo. But again, it's still a residential street. I'm, I think, going through town.
And you've not talked to anyone at the county?
No, I haven't talked to anybody. Another question I have is, earlier this year, the World of Water Works tore up the corner of First Street and Maple to put a new valve or something in there. Who's in charge of putting the road back in the condition that it was in before they dug it up? There's a probably three foot wide by six foot long, three inch drop. When you come around that corner, you just, you drop into this big hole. Nobody's ever been back to put rock in it or put car in it or whatever they do. I just wanted to know if somebody was going to come out and put it back in the condition that it was in.
Who's responsible for that?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. Is it the Water Works? Is it the county? I don't know.
Okay. Not familiar with exactly what's going on in your neighborhood, but we still can check into that. I was going to say, would you mind leaving your name and contact information at the board office? So that we can have, like I said, the conversation with our maintenance director as well as then follow up with code enforcement and see what some of those things are. Because obviously the city of Waterloo, we do contract with their planning and zoning department, but there are different requirements for the county than there are for the city.
Man, I understand that. And not only is it a nice or though to me, it's kind of a a dangerous thing when you're only a foot off the road, you know? I mean, that's why the frontage and the parking was put there. If, if, you know, somebody, if it needed to be. Last thing I have is I was wondering about the control panels for the pumps on the sewer system. They were supposed to be done by June, by first of June. I still have an old panel. A lot of old panels still around town. The con, I'm calling it a contract. The contract was left two years ago to be done by June 1st. He was in here, the Urban Services was here the first of this year, said he was the third done. It was going to finish this spring. What's the status on that? I, the, the, June 1st is going by. And if you drive through town, there's a lot of what looks like the old style control panels still on the pumps. So I mean, is that something that's still going on or did we shift money from something to do something else?
It, it is definitely still going on. I, I don't recall a date of June 1st, so I'd have to look at that and.
I can show you the minutes where it was.
Well, I have the contract and I will look into that and speak with Ben. We have been talking about it and he, it's definitely something he continues to work on. There's, it will be done. We're, we're paying as we go and it will be done as he has time to get it done.
So we gave him the deadline to two, we gave him two years to do it.
Well, we can, we'll, I'll address that.
And, and if you'll add me your contact information too, we can follow up with that and then get back to you on that or have they call you directly too.
Yeah, I'll be following up with this one.
Here.
So I have, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else that has anything for public comments? Anyone online? Right, we'll move on to years of service awards to employees with 20 or more years of service.
Yeah, we have a couple of employees to recognize, Colleen Shipper with General Assistant. She is celebrating 35 years of service to the county.
Wow.
Yes, we always do. I'm a termite starter. Thank you so much. And I don't, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, she's over. I guess she wanted to make some comments. Thirty-five years, a lot.
Yeah, definitely. I guess time flies when you love what you do. It's been easy. Black Hawk County is just a great employer. I think I just want to thank three mentors that helped me get me to where I'm at today. And that's Tim Staley, Steve Tissue and Bob Lincoln. They're the ones that gave me the confidence to do what I'm doing. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Colleen.
Yep. I don't see her in the room, but also celebrating Jessica Peters with the Attorney's Office, celebrating 20 years of service.
Sorry she couldn't.
Yeah.
Thank you all. Moving on to item four, claims and payments. Is the resolution approving expenditures and the county auditor being authorized to direct to issue payments against various spend made in motion?
Motion.
Second. Moved and seconded.
You couldn't wait for it. Our total bill payment today is $774,798.18. Out of that, we are making a payment of $2,575.40 from the 60-40 fund. And I don't think we have much on here for the last or unusual payments this time around. So everything looks routine. All appears to be in order. Any questions for me today?
It's been moved and seconded. Please answer your names. Call.
Curtinback?
Yes.
Brandt?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes. Item number five, receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nikos, engineer. A brief update in the road department. Canefield Road opened up yesterday. If you recall, that was a project that Border Construction is working on. The drip edge, the drip edges of that, those are bridges. There's four bridges. This is the first one they, they started with this year. So they did open Canefield Road yesterday. Then they will be moving on to three other bridges throughout the county. I will inform you of that when they close those roads. By Dubuque Road, that's a large culvert, cast and raised black culvert that's going on. That's still going well. They are finishing up pouring the floor this week. And then our bridge crew, they are moving out to, to Mount Burton Road north, just north of the airport. I encourage our supervisors who haven't seen our bridge crew working to make time over the next, probably the next six weeks to come out and see some of the work they've got going on. They'll start the demolition of that probably tomorrow. So that road will be closed between Wagner Road and Streeter Roads on Mount Burton Road. And then other than that, we are mowing paper roads, gravel roads, and then hauling our mild rock to, on the gravel road system. Can I answer any questions at this time? Thank you.
Any other project updates, department heads would like to?
Good morning, Board. Yolando Lovett is Director of Black Hawk County Veterans Affairs. And I know that the, there's a lot on agenda today, but I wanted to just share a couple of things for our fiscal year, end of the fiscal year. One is that we did, just had our commission meeting last Wednesday. Commandant Todd Jacobus and Mike Olson came by and greeted us with just some general information on what's going on with our Department of Veterans Affairs and some of the legislative projects that are out there that probably didn't pass this year, but they're going to continue to support them going into next year. So it was a great honor to have him come by in person and greet the veterans. In fact, we did it down at the Grot Museum in support of, our numbers are growing at our meetings now. And so that was a pretty good thing. So I just want to slide through a couple of slides for you. We had our project meeting yesterday on our proposed new office. And it looks like now our new movement day is about the 28th of July in that standpoint. So we're looking forward to that about the end of the month, depending on various things that are happening. One is they were saying that the heat is causing problems with some of the drywall and the painting, things of that nature. So they're trying to get the space, get the atmospherics in it, get the AC on, things of that nature. So those are the challenges. We're just standing by. I just want to run through a couple of renditions again. This is how we're hoping that the final product looks like and it's coming along. And I'm just going to jump through these because you've seen them before. I just want to kind of give you updates on the pictures that we took of the remodel, the kitchen. The cabinets are in, the waiting room, the, the doors are in, but the glasses itself is not in. They're, they're going to get those in and that's, and then we have the inside of our waiting room. Things are cleaning up. They're starting to take shape. We are starting to see what the end product's going to be. There's the hallway, Sarah's office, then some of our exterior offices and the back doors. They're doing some great work. We want to thank Rory and his staff and all the contractors that are doing great work. But also to take the opportunity to just thank the board supervisors for the support of us moving the whole fiscal year. We want to thank the board supervisors, our VA Commission to include Michelle and Gabby. Because without them and then the staff of the county itself and then my staff, I think we've had a very prominent and prosperous fiscal year in that standpoint. And so I'm going to go and do just a couple of slides and then get out of the way. Just for our June product production, we've had 25 claims approved. And then you could see the total amount of the retro pay for those 25 claims approved just in June itself. So are we making a difference in our veterans' lives and their surviving spouses? Yes, we are, our office, and to include the state. One of the things that the commandant had talked about during his, our meeting was Iowa, out of the 50 states, we're 45th in veterans receiving compensation. So we're the 45th state out of the 50, so we have a lot more work to do. But there's some challenges and some barriers there, but we're doing what we can. And then I kind of just look at our economical impact to our community when it just comes to, when we get a veteran in their door and that claim is approved and they're getting their back pay. It was 2.4 million for the fiscal year in retro pay that our veterans and surviving spouses receive. And that's not including their monthly. That's just what they were owed based off of the claims that was submitted. And then we've got our first and second quarter numbers. We were about 173 for the first quarter, 152 for the second quarter. And then our third quarter, we were 124. And our fourth quarter numbers, we're ending about averaging 126 veterans coming in our door. The reason why I bring that up, because if you could see over our six-year comparison, we've had about 10,683 veterans come in our door over those six years. And then out of that, 1,972 were new. And we still look at our dominance when it comes to our Vietnam era veterans. Still with the, we have a downward swin, downward swing of veterans receiving benefits total in a total fashion, but yet the growing monthly grand total keeps going up. Even though our receiving benefits is about 2,060. But what you don't see is how many veterans we lost that fiscal year that we're receiving. And we're trying to figure out how do we get that so that we can show the pendulum swing of how many we lost compares to how many we had come in our office that fiscal year. Hopefully that's our challenge next year. And then kind of like what our numbers were for the month of June and what counties and what cities came in from Black Hawk County and from other counties. We are green in our line of, our line of engagements from our, we have three LOEs. We're a green there. For benefits area, the only thing that we're yellowing is we didn't do any veteran home applications for the whole quarter. And so, but we'll continue to promote that. And that's one of the other reasons why the commandant was down, to promote more accessibility to the veterans home. We're green there. One of the other slides that I wanted to bring up was us working our partners with SSVF and HACAP. There was 44 veterans that we made referrals to and they helped either with rapid rehousing or homeless prevention. So that's a good program there. Our donations kind of going down, but I think the, the public is looking at helping AFIL a lot more. They're getting more of the donations because they are doing a lot more of the active work of getting veterans the assumable items that they need. And so, but we're still proud of what we're taking in from that. And then here's our, end of the year, our numbers did increase about $5,000. But as you can see, again, majority of the expenses that we are helping veterans with is either with funeral expenses or something related to the cemeteries, as you can see. We, we did help with shelter. We did a little bit more in shelter this year, but we were down in utilities. And then what, we've provided 122 gift baskets to various care facilities, living facilities, senior living facilities. And we still have the rest of the sphere to finish that out. Every month we go to a different care facility. And then our staff participation, you can see some of the things that we're doing with our staff participation. And just wanted to share that again, we were invited to the UAW Ford Veterans Conference in Detroit, Michigan. And you see on the left-hand side, it's myself and my wife speaking. That's the conference people in the middle and some of the other participants in that standpoint. Looks like they're inviting us back to Black Lake in August, also to speak to their, to the Regional Nine UAW conference and they're, they're asking us to come participate in that. Other than that, I just wanted to share those kinds of stats with you as we close out our fiscal year. We know we have to come back again in December with our annual, but I just want to take a few minutes off to share those. Standard, I'd address any questions for the service.
I appreciate that you did. I was going to ask the question you asked, you said, mentioned that Iowa is 45th?
In total, yes. So out of the 50 states, when you look at the federal compensation coming into all states, we're the 45th state out of the 50. So a couple of barriers that we have, you bring up a good point and I'll leave that alone.
No, I'm curious about that.
So I, I always look at it in that standpoint of, you know, you look at Yolando and Chiquita, we're veterans. I'm from Waterloo and I came back, but the only real reason why I came back was my mom and dad. So what's driving those veterans once they leave the great state of Iowa? And then they go down to Jacksonville, Florida, they go to San Diego, they go all over the world. And, and then the challenges that bring them back home in that standpoint. So looking at our populace, how, how do we attract more veterans to come back home? Does the veterans that we have in our county, a majority of them are our National Guard or our reserves. So they're working Monday through Friday at their normal job and then they're working for the state. And if they're deployed like the 133rd is doing right now, they come back home. They get that, that title veteran. But just the state of Illinois alone, if we look at some comparisons, for the state of Iowa, you have to be 100% service connected in order to get the full disability home state tax credit where you don't pay on your home. Our, our neighboring state in Illinois, you only have to be 70%. So those are the different challenges. Iowa's a tax state, Florida, a lot of the other California, a lot of Arizona, they're non-tax. So those are the things that are driving veterans to those states and then the weather itself. But we're doing okay, I guess, for the people that really love Iowa, will come back to Iowa in that standpoint.
Yolando, Henry, was it May or April when Henry was talking about proposed legislation as it related to? I can't remember what that bill was, but had all those veterans' benefits rolled up until it?
There, there is one that Mr. Olson talked about. They're looking at tearing off the home state tax credit to where you got maybe 70%. You didn't get a full blown, but you got a deficit off of your home tax. So, but they didn't bite off on that, but they're going to try to push that again this year when such stuff should come back into play. And then just Gabby participated in our, our meeting to talk about how do we get more and more resources out there to let the veterans know that we're here to help them in that standpoint. We are doing some great jobs and based off of, really is off of what Gabby is doing for us. You know, we give veterans the flyer. We, we give them a, a placard. They even, we even have now the magnets. So every veteran that comes in our office gets a, a folder with our contact information on with all of this to include a packet deal. So we're doing more and more when it comes to promotion, whether it's websites or physical. And we're just going to try to continue to grab as many veterans as possible to check and see if they're entitled to their benefits. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good to see you in person. Don't worry about trying to use the quick thing. Are there any other department heads that would like to speak or elected officials? Let's move on then to the minutes being approved for July 1st, 2025.
Smooth. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say aye. The minutes are approved. We will have two hearings later today, one for a rezon ordinance for 77298 Daniel Kraft and a rezon ordinance 77299 for Bethany Fisher. Item eight is the consent agenda. Items are acted upon by a single resolution unless someone wishes to remove an item. Anyone wishing to remove an item for discussion?
No. Move forward.
Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
Moved and seconded. Please answer your names. Call.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Curtinback?
Yes.
Brandt?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes. Item number nine, other business. Motion to appoint Michelle Weidner, Finance Director, Billy Joe Peff, Financial slash Accounting Manager, Jen Todd, Payroll slash Accounting Manager, and Anna Knapp, HR Generalist to the Deferred Compensation Committee.
Smooth.
Smooth.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Before we say it's approved, go ahead. If you want to come in, I'm sorry. I can give you an opportunity.
Oh, you're fine. Amanda's my HR Director. So like I stated in our email, this is just a committee that we've had several members on in different roles throughout the Treasurer's Office and the Auditor's Office. And so looking to update that. It is not one that meets very often. We generally get information from Nationwide, our representative, who handles all of the deferred compensation. For those that don't know about deferred compensation, it's an additional retirement savings plan that we have. It's called a 457B. And that's because we are a public entity that employees can contribute percentage of their wages to that. There is no match from the county. But this committee will kind of keep us in line with regards to any like IRS changes or guidelines, new plan offerings from Nationwide. But it is kind of a, not one that meets, you know, very often because it's pretty straightforward. And we, really Nationwide administers all of the plan, you know, investment and changes and things like that. But we do need to have a committee because we have some fiduciary responsibility with maintaining that plan. And I appreciate the volunteers that, so they'd be willing to serve on it. So we'll be bringing a couple of things to you all in the coming weeks with regards to the current plan and a new plan option for participants. Any questions at all?
Right. How many people do we have in order to set our staff to even know?
Um, it's like, it's not, it's not a huge percentage. Out of the 400 employees, I think we range somewhere between 40 to 50 participants. You have to double check, but I know Brian said we, we have been bringing our rep, Brian Jimmerson in from time to time. And I have seen enrollment gone up or go up in the past like year or two years. You know, we do try to educate. We've had financial literacy courses offered through our EAP and have coupled that with Nationwide to educate employees on how to save beyond your pension. IPRZ is a wonderful benefit retirement plan, but you know, once you start drawing on that, it's, it's a pretty, you know, static. It doesn't grow, I guess, generally. And so the deferred comp, yeah, we do see memberships, but we're not, it's not a high contributing plan, I suppose. Or not one that we see a lot of membership in. I have had people ask about if the county would ever offer a match that differently would drive probably some more participants. And it's kind of a mixed, out of the cities and counties that I see, some offer a match pretty, you know, limited. So several do not, so similar to us, but yeah. Yeah, IPRZ, everybody says is rolling whether you're one to or not. That's mandatory. But the deferred comp is a nice way to supplement the retirement, you know, savings. And so we do try to educate that. And that's what the committee helps to do in HR to provide that information to employees. Do encourage everyone to look into it. And I think the lowest you can do is either $10 to $15 a paycheck. And every bit does count. So, yeah. Any questions of, any other questions?
Thanks for answering. That's higher number than I thought.
Yeah, we're, it's growing, I would say, definitely. And it does help when we have some financial literacy, you know, webinars and things like that. Whether they save in deferred comp or they have a 401K from a different employer or something like that, it kind of helps to meet their financial goals. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item B is a resolution that the request for purchase of capital equipment submitted by Al Yu, Information Technology Director, be approved and direct the chair to sign for same to purchase 15 Dell Pro 16 laptops for a total cost of $17,775.45.
So moved.
I'm moved.
Second.
Second. Moved and seconded.
Good morning, Board. Al Yu, IT Director. We replace our computers at the end of every year of its life. So this is the new fiscal year. This is the start of a bunch of new purchases. Can I answer any questions for you guys?
Does this go to particularly department?
Uh, it kind of varies. I think the majority of these are going to go to public health. We kind of buy them in batches. So I don't want to sit on computers too long. You can buy them ahead of time, but if you sit on them, then the work starts to update and I don't really do that. So.
Now, where do the old ones go?
Uh, we, we recycle them. So we follow any compliance that's required. So like anything that we recycle, we generally pull the hard drives out of them and then the company takes them and disposes of them or reuses them.
Thank you.
Any other questions? This is a resolution. Please answer your names. Call.
Hall?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Brandt?
Yes.
Curtinback?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes. Item C is a resolution that the letter support in the 28E agreement for the Competitive Highway Bridge Program Grant, project number DGA-C007-XT-07 Eagle Road Bridge over Muller Creek be approved and direct the chair to sign for same as recommended by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer.
Second.
Good morning, then, Board. As you know, our Eagle Road Bridge project was one of the bridges selected by the Iowa County Engineers Association in the state of Iowa to participate in this competitive highway bridge program. This agreement states that we will follow all state federal regulations. We will pay, there's a consultant involved who is putting the application together. Each participant, each county or city is, is, will pay approximately $10,000 to. HDR is the consultant that the Iowa DOT has used for numerous, numerous applications for this, for these grants. So I'm asking that you support this and you sign this agreement and we'll get this sent out to the DOT. The next part of the process now will be soliciting. The next part of the process now will be soliciting letters of support from school districts, businesses, anyone who might use this Eagle Road Bridge replacement, why it's important to them that we replace the structure. So, I'll be soliciting those over the next two weeks, uh, because the DOT needs those back by, uh, July eighteen. Can I answer any more questions about this grant?
Any questions? It's a resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Brandt.
Yes.
Kurten Buck.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Hall. Leyland.
Yes. Item D, discussion possible board action on seeking proposals for natural gas brokering and consulting services for nine Black Hawk County facilities.
So moved.
But we don't have an action.
Where's in the rhythm?
Yeah, go right, oh yeah, I was gonna say.
Second one I do that.
Why exactly is the motion?
Alright.
Uh, Rory Giving, Facilities Director, um, this is a, uh, this is a new concept for us. Um, just to kind of take you back a bit, historically, uh, our department with regards to brokering, uh, natural gas for our facilities, um, historically, we would just broker for the, uh, the Black Hawk County jail, uh, because of its usage, the high usage. Um, in the past, that seemed to only make sense, uh, by the time you look at other facilities that don't have the high usages, uh, what we have found is by the time you add transportation costs and administrative fees, it just didn't make sense to, uh, include them in the brokerage process. Um, so what that meant was our department, we would go out and we would work with suppliers and look at rates, we would usually do that in the summertime, um, and we would try to lock in our natural gas for the jail. With this concept, um, outsourcing to a third-party consultant, uh, the benefit that we would get is they could take all nine of the facilities that were outlined, um, in the RFP that I'd sent to you the other day, um, they would take all nine of those facilities and group them into a pool, and that would allow them to, or allow us to get the benefit of locking in those natural gas rates, um, for all nine of those facilities under, under one pool. Um, we didn't have the ability to do that, um, obviously, when, when we were doing this ourselves. Um, so there, there is potential benefit for that, that would increase the purchasing power, um, which would be through this, uh, third-party consultant. Um, it'd give us, uh, what we hope, a little more stability, uh, when we're planning for our budgets. Um, and, uh, one other benefit, uh, we could consolidate, uh, all of our natural gas for those nine facilities into one bill. Uh, now, we would still break those out per, per site, just so that site could, uh, you know, budget for their, for their next year, uh, but it would come to us in one bill.
Why, I'm sorry to interrupt, but why didn't we consider that, or why wouldn't we be able to? You said we couldn't, and that before the nine, nine facility, five nine?
When, when we, uh, historically, when we did it in the past, uh, we looked at just the larger users. Um, if we were to say, look at, say, the Arlen Highway site, uh, by the time you've had administrative fees, um, for that single site, uh, it just, the benefits just weren't there to, to lock in because you just didn't have the usage. But by throwing them into a larger pool of customers, uh, we can get benefit from that lock-in rate under one administrative fee.
And we couldn't do that by ourselves?
We could potentially, but that would mean that we would have to, uh, work with the suppliers and really try to determine what the best lock-in rates were, uh, negotiate those administrative fees, those transportation fees. It's something we haven't tried in the past, but, uh, if you go and you try to single source one of those smaller, uh, users, um, I'm afraid we're gonna end up with the same outcome, um, that we would, uh, in the past when we tried that, it just, the usage just wasn't there. This is new for us, um, what I'm proposing is that we, uh, we, we send out an RFP. Um, we, uh, hopefully will get, uh, multiple proposals, and we tried this for a year. Um, our anticipated savings would be about thirteen thousand dollars a year, um, and that's based on today's numbers, that's based on the rates that we're receiving today. Um, so that could go up and down just a little bit, uh, but I think that's a pretty solid, uh, solid number. Um, the fees for the consulting services, what we're being told, those average about thirty-nine cents a term, uh, for those fees, and that would equate to about five thousand dollars a year, um, which would be offset by that thirteen thousand dollar a year savings, uh, if that was achieved.
So, yeah, eight thousand.
Yeah. So, what I'm recommending to the, to the Board is that we try this for a year, we get all nine of those facilities under, um, under this consultant, they work for us, they provide us monthly reports, uh, they provide us reports of what the rates are doing. We would still be in charge of doing that lock-in, um, but they would provide us the guidance, uh, uh, of what was in our, in the county's best interest to lock in, timing-wise and cost-wise.
So that's something you've done before, so I mean, kind of.
For just the one site for the jail.
Yeah, we remember when you do that.
Yeah.
Rory, just having, uh, that third-party handle a lot of that, is that save you time for you guys and your crew?
Uh, potentially, yes, I mean, if we were to go out and, and do this for all nine sites, um, we would have to basically generate approximately ten years of usage just to kind of give us a guide of what that usage is going to be. That's, that's really the, the homework that we would have to do. Once we get that data, uh, then it's not so difficult, uh, moving forward. Again, though, by the time, if we were to go out and do each site independently, I'm afraid that the administrative fees, transportation fees for going out and brokering, uh, these, uh, this gas purchase, um, might outweigh, uh, the benefit of, of the work that was put into it by our staff.
Maybe that's what I was thinking much along the same line you are, um, how will we know, or recognize the benefit? I guess, since it's not something we've done before.
Um, so the, what we would put in the RFP is that we would request a monthly report of what our usages are, um, and what, uh, what our historical usage was, what our usage is, what we're paying, what the lock-in rates are. Um, they would have to provide those reports to us, and then we would go back and look historically, compare that to where we're at now. Um, that's probably about the best way that we can determine whether or not we're getting bankrupt or block is to look at what we've done historically and look at where we're at currently with the lock-in rate. And it, it's hedging, right, um, you're going out into the market, and so there, uh, when we've done this with the jail, historically, there have been years where we've locked in rates and the retail rates were lower, uh, than what we've gone out to the market to get. Um, but there's been, I'd say, more years than, than not where we came out ahead by locking in, we've been able to not see those spikes in, in natural gas costs because we've locked in those rates. Um, so it's really served us pretty well for the jail, um, and the idea is, is if we pull this all under one pool, that'll serve us well for all nine of these sites, but it is a trial, uh, and that's why I only recommend doing this for one-year contract, um, to see if, uh, if we do result in any benefits.
From the five thousand.
We might be able to even see, you know, what type of work goes into this, how involved it is, and then we'll be able to, as a department, to maybe evaluate it a little harder and see, is this something we can take on ourselves?
So do we, in the, when you think it's gonna be an annual cost of five thousand, are you putting that in the RFP that it's five thousand or less, or no?
No, no. No, that's just our estimate.
So if it's higher, we have.
We, we can say no. It'll be a bid that we'll receive and we can reject them. So right now, all I'm asking for is that we send out an RFP to, to get some proposals, uh, to see what there is out there for, for interest.
That was my motion.
What's that?
That we move forward with seeking RFP.
Yes. That's what we're looking for at this point in time, is just to get the RFP out there, and then we'll evaluate your proposals and see if it makes sense. So, at this point, there's no cost until, uh, until we make our recommendation to the Board.
It mentions in the RFP that the proposals will not be open publicly?
It, no, we don't, this wouldn't be a public hearing, it wouldn't need the qualifications for that, for the, yeah.
But why would we not open those publicly?
Uh, typically, for a public hearing, we would, if it's over a hundred thousand dollars. So, these are more of an informal RFP, where we would just receive them, open them, evaluate them, and then bring our recommendation to the Board.
Along with the list of who all, we receive them?
Yeah, 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 those, those protocols would still all be followed. The only, the only difference is you wouldn't, uh, set a public hearing date.
Yeah. We'll do the hearing.
And could those, that was kind of what you're getting at, just for purposes of transparency?
Yeah, just to see.
Yeah, we've still provided a letting, a list of who, who all submitted proposal and what that cost is.
I have another question on general conditions, where it mentions the county reserves the right to award the contract based solely on submitted proposals or engage in further negotiations.
That's pretty general language in all of our RFPs.
But not after they've been received?
Uh.
You wouldn't be negotiating after you got the bids, right?
No, no, this, I gotta find that section, one second.
I just wanted to be sure we were.
No, typically, you wouldn't do any negotiations after the, uh, RFPs are received.
And when it mentions, do we choose the option that's most advantageous? How will we do that, or will we have some of the matrix that you're using and show what the advantages are?
For me, it would just be our historical and what we've spent in the past, and, uh, we know what our utility bills are for these nine sites, um, so we would go back and look and see what have we spent in the past and, and what are they, uh, saying the lock-in rates are at that moment in time. And it is kind of tricky because those lock-in rates do fluctuate, and so, once we receive these proposals, um, we will have to get it on the agenda right away, um, and typically, what we'll say is not to exceed, uh, because there is no guarantee, if they put in a lock-in rate at this cost, um, there's no guarantee of what that is. This company would negotiate, um, with the suppliers based on the amount of customers they have in their pool, so they have a little bit of a, more of an advantage than we would, um, because they have a larger pool base. Be similar to our insurance, I guess, is how I would look at it, like our ICAP services, how we, uh, are in, in a pool, and it just gives them more negotiating power with the suppliers.
Are there any third-party brokers?
I know of just a couple, uh, that have approached us in the past. And what we'll do is we'll make sure we get them out, uh, that all the brokers that we know of anyway, that they get a copy of this, uh, RFP, so they have a, a chance to put a proposal in. And then we'll obviously put it out on our website as well.
So at this point, you're getting proposals.
Yep.
Just gonna ask you, the references section on there, is that typical? I mean, I like it, I like, I wish we had that more.
Yeah, we typically will always ask for at least three references. Any other questions?
Any questions, can you just press anything on your end?
No, I think it's good to try for a year.
Yeah, I'm, I'm intrigued, uh, to Rory's point.
Based on what we see, I don't see the.
Thank you.
So you want to clarify your motion, or just?
Clarify, the motion is, we're moving forward with an RFP. A second.
It's been moved and seconded, um, let's do a roll call vote, please answer, your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Kurten Buck.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes. Moving on to item E, discussion possible board action, Northeast Iowa local workforce area merger consideration. And to be very honest, I, as I put possible board action on there, but didn't expect any action for today, just because really it was kind of informative at this step, each one of our provided the email and we gave you the information on the workforce development, what is already foregoing. But, um, in the next probably couple of weeks, I'll be probably bringing it back with hopefully some more information than asking for the Board's, um, thoughts or, um, opinions on, on whether or not we merge, and just to provide a little bit of summarizing, I guess, for what this is, is for the workforce development, um, activities that are going on in our community. Obviously, that includes job training, youth programs, dislocated workers, and, um, the adult care services. And as you saw on the map, there are six regions in the state, workforce development regions, and, um, two of those, um, are not included in this potential for a merger. Um, the western side of the state is already in one regional development area, so, and that takes the whole western part. And, um, central Iowa is the Des Moines, Dallas, Polk County, those surrounding four or five counties there. Obviously, they're, I guess, not unusual for Des Moines, but not interested in merging or, um, being anything other than the Des Moines, Polk County area. But for the others, the northeast, um, region, which, Northeast Iowa region, which is us, um, East Central, South Central, and Mississippi Valley are the four that have been, just discussing in the last month, this has come up, and that's why you have no more information much than I do. But, um, what had happened was South Central, um, their funding had been impacted greatly and reduced, and so they were no longer able to afford the administrative. That also meant, um, the, the cost that, for the fiscal, um, the fiscal agent to, I think, October first. But with that shortage of funds and them still wanting services in their area, people were looking at how we can explore what our options are, um, for us, um, to continue workforce services in our portion of the state. Um, they asked about merging with some of the others, the other three of us then, and, um, just to take the temperature, I guess, to see where we were with that. And, um, already, Mississippi Valley is interested, and Mississippi Valley is the Davenport Burlington kind of, um, population of, um, South Central was a town, one Marshall Town, East Central was Cedar Rapids and Iowa City, and us, obviously, Waterloo, Dubuque, and Mason City. So, um, right now, we're exploring the possibility of merging, it could be with two, the two that said they'd like to go ahead and merge, but it could be three, way a merger, it could be four. Um, so, we have asked the state to provide us some numbers to take a look at what that would mean for us for admin costs and benefits, and because we all have, right now, staff, we have three admin staff in our region, um, others have maybe one or two, but because of the population base and stuff, we have, we have larger. Um, I guess it's just to give you the, the, a little bit of fact background is that funds have been reduced each year. They're anticipating a twenty-five percent reduction from where we all are in twenty-six and twenty-seven, and so based on that, it's, we're just really exploring, I said, we, we kind of said it's a recurring theme that we've seen, you know, in the behavioral health, mental health, um, actions, how it's happened there, also department corrections, where the funding was just reduced to a point where you didn't have a lot of opportunity and you were doing what the state, um, was mandating. So, we don't know that that could be where we still end up, but we're exploring it in hopes that we can delay, um, any action in that and kind of improve, maybe with the administrative roles, maybe merge that in some ways so that we could, um, have oversight of fewer, needing fewer audits, needing, um, also, maybe just one fiscal agent for all of us, knowing that would probably be a larger cost we had to pay for, that, that some of those costs would be, um, still saved. So, that's kind of where we're at today, I don't know if you have any questions, I'm not sure I have a lot of answers for you, but I think I, in the information I provided, that was kind of why now, and that was why we're trying to sustain the services for the people that need them, from those workforce things, not the admin fees, but looking at how we can accomplish some savings in admin fees and leveraging our dollars, um, to retain staff as well as the services, and hoping to pool in our expertise and funding would do that. We're also hoping to maintain local control as much as we can and voice and not become just advisory boards, and so think by doing it this way and considering it, that very possibly, um, we would be allowed to have a voice and continue, and taking this step to do it on our own and not be mandated to do it, so, I guess we'll see. Important dates were August first, we need to have this submitted to the state, so we need decisions from all those of us who would be in this possible merger. So we need decisions from all those of us who would be in this possible merger. And the twenty-fifth of August is when the state would review the information and possibly approve, I guess, whether or not we would do that, um, or could be allowed to do it. I think I, the downside of this was I saw that for any of the regions to merge, it will require all counties in the region to agree. So if there's any county that disagrees, then they just are made to. So that's kind of weighing heavily, I guess, on everybody.
Well, it wasn't that long ago, they did a merger with a bunch of the workforce development areas already. So now we're looking at another one and continues to be cutting dollars to fund these things.
Yeah.
And the, the issue I still have is we have a, still issue finding workers to fill job positions and create career opportunities for folks in the state of Iowa. And that's one of the functions of this board. And we continue to ignore where the needs are and just keeps shrinking them down. So I, I'm not sure that we have a whole lot of choice whether we do it voluntarily or like last night, it was just done for us.
It is, like I said, yeah, you've got some history in it as well as I do. And I said, we were showing these different possibilities for how we formed regions before. And had a lot of anguish, think, in kind of working through that. So hoping that this might be a little different, doesn't mean it won't be with the same ending. But I guess we're willing to at least take a look at it. And so, um, there, we're trying to get, um, a face-to-face meeting and in-person with, um, everyone, understanding that we've got twenty counties to look at and, you know, and it helps to meet in-person for these kinds of things and have that discussion and see where everyone's at, much better than a Zoom meeting, if we can. So we'll be doing that. I thought, um, let me see, I think we looked at some dates next week and if that didn't work with vacations and things too, maybe I'm going to go to the next week, but.
Linda, is the county actually putting money into this to, to fund part of this?
No, I mean, as far as, first of all, no, it's the, typically passes from the feds to the state, but it was going to stay under the state.
Who's the point of contact over there at the workforce development site?
Um, at our site?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't know. There's probably difference. Sorry.
And their, uh, one staff is the main contact.
I don't know. I thought because of the different program, programs, they probably each, is there a certain person you'd like to speak to on services there or?
Yeah.
Because they're not involved with this. I was gonna say the workforce, the local workforce development board is, um, made up of primarily businesses, education, and economic development people. Then the CEOs and now supervisors are involved is the oversight of that. And we call it the CEO group, but I was gonna say it's a supervisor from each of those counties.
Okay.
Then that, so if there's someone that you'd like to speak with, like you said, from the, from our group, from the regional, I certainly could do that. Or if there's someone you'd like to have and you come in and talk about it more too, we could do that.
I just think it'd be nice to get Pop over there and say, say the point with somebody to see exactly what they do, what the impact is, how many people, because it's a racist point, I mean. My, my only concern would be, if I think the odds of, of this happening are slim. If, if my understanding is.
Which part?
Every county at the merger, like every county involved, so every county within our group, Northeast Iowa, LWDA, and South Central would have to be in agreement, right?
Well, South Central's already in agreement. Mississippi Valley's already in agreement. Those two have kind of gone around the table, said already they were willing to do that. And so those two would merge, whether or not we want to do a third or fourth, like I said, the others, uh, three, if, if they do or not. And I think that's why the face-to-face is important, kind of have everybody taking, listening to each other and what they have to say and going with that, understanding that one county opting out takes away the merger possibility and if everybody else is thinking that, maybe having an opportunity to make the case for changing someone's mind if that were the case, or them changing ours, saying, I'm sorry, it's not worth it for a reason. Um, they're, they went around the table, um, at the last meeting to just take the temperature, I guess. Um, there were several that were very interested in merging, probably because of saving admin dollars and seeing how we'd, how we'd work through it, but knowing there was the devil in the details and we need more information. So, um, staffing, you know, we see that that's very important to us and maintaining that, especially when you look at such a large area, if we were to take over the half of the state and be one region, that you still want to keep staff as much as one could with the specialty in your own area, knowing the system, knowing the workers, you know, knowing the programs. So, and we've been very blessed to have, um, excellent staff with an understanding of workforce development, but also, um, familiar with the, with our region. So, um, that, and that could be obviously a possibility when you start cutting admin costs, that staff would be reduced too. So not sure where all of us would go, just end up exploring, so.
Yeah.
So I'm hoping to get even more information too, as they, as we get it, but.
I was serving on the state workforce development board when the last merger went through and started shrinking things down. And every time it shrinks, you lose less and less contact with what the needs are locally. And eventually this is going to get down to where it's just going to be enough more than another proportion of the state workforce development board. I don't know if it's a, I'd say a push to get rid of the local boards, but every time you consolidate, you lose less and less ability to make changes and address needs in your local areas.
So, and I voted against it last time for that very reason. And here we are, you know, a few years later, doing kind of still the same path. So that's why I said it's kind of a recurring thing, you've seen in Department of Corrections and Mental Health and that type of thing, and the direction we're going more, it's maybe more less far. But they're important programs, so if we can at least sustain them as much as we can. Sorry, I can't figure out the name for some public good activity.
That's fine. I can call over and hear what's going to do.
So, um, get more information to you and like I said, and let you know too, because we will have to do that vote for us, for me to represent them, what this county wants to do, something during the next couple of weeks. Item F, there's a hearing on, and the time is nine fifty-seven. Hearing on a Proposory Zoned Ordinance Number seven seven dash two nine eight, Daniel Kraft. Is there a motion to receive and place on file proof of publication with notice of public hearing?
Sorry.
I'm moved.
Moving seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 Same sign, motion carries. Item number two, motion to waive the first reading as notice was published on June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five in the Waterloo Cedar Falls Courier, in accordance with requirements of the Code of Iowa and publication was approved on the request submitted by Daniel Kraft to rezone one point eight four acres of land from A agriculture to AR agricultural residential to build a new single home, new single-family home located west of one zero eight three zero South Campfield Road.
So moved. Second.
It's moved in seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 Proposed same sign, motion carries. Item three, motion to close the hearing as oral and written comments were received and placed on file.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Speaker, have any written comments?
No written comments.
All right, Joseph.
Morning, Board. So this, uh, request is by Daniel Kraft. Uh, he's seeking to rezone one point eight four acres of land. The LISA score, uh, was low, it was one sixty-five. Um, part of that, this soil is very sandy. This area that he's seeking to rezone is also the top of a hill. Um, so there is some slope which impacted that LISA score. And overall plan, he's planning, if this rezone passes, to plant off, I believe it was pro, around twelve acres of land, um, for his property. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of this request unanimously at their June meeting. Uh, do you have any questions for me or the applicant?
Only question I was thinking about, Dan, is the driveways, are they going to come along the fence line there? Back, it's not where you're.
Correct. Yeah, right between the fence line and that tree girl that you see in front of the.
Did you wish to make some comments or talk about your project or anything, or is this, you're there for questions?
Just here for questions.
I have none.
So, all in favor to close the hearing?
Aye.
You can get a motion.
Aye.
Item four, resolution to suspend the rules requiring the board supervisors to consider and vote on the proposed ordinance at two prior meetings.
So, second.
Moving seconded, all, um, please answer as your name is called.
Brant.
Yes.
Cartonback.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Leland.
Yes. Item five, ordinance adoption, that ordinance amending ordinance number thirty-six as amended, the Blackhawk County Iowa Agricultural Preservation Zoning Ordinance adopted February second nineteen ninety-nine by adding subsection number two nine eight to section six B, rezoning certain property as described in the above requests submitted by Daniel Kraft and to consider the same for adoption, and if adopted, would be known as ordinance number seven seven dash two nine eight.
So moved, second.
It's been moved in seconded. Any more questions? Please answer as your name is called.
Cartonback.
Yes.
Brant.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leland.
Yes. Item, hearing on proposed rezone ordinance number seven seven dash two nine nine, Bethany Fisher. The time is ten oh one of the hearing. Is there a motion to receive and place on file proof of publication with notice of public hearing?
So moved, second.
Moving seconded, all in favor, say aye.
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 Proposed same sign, motion carries. Motion to waive the first reading as notice was published on June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five on the Waterloo Cedar Falls Courier, in accordance with requirements of the Code of Iowa and publication was approved on the request submitted by Bethany Fisher to rezone two point one seven acres of land from A agricultural district to AR agricultural residential district to be able to replace an existing single-family home located at six nine zero six East Ryanbeck Road.
So moved, second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Proposed same sign, motion carries. Item number three, is motion to close the hearing as oral and written comments were received and placed on file.
So moved, second.
Any written comments?
No written comments.
Joseph.
Morning, Board. Uh, so this request by the Fishers is to rezone this parcel. Um, it was split off as an agricultural plot. Um, it likely shouldn't have been when they came to, uh, get a building permit to replace the house, um, that has been torn down. We were looking to see if a house had been on it before nineteen eighty-two, um, using the aerial photos that we have access to. I could not find any evidence, solid evidence, that a house had been in this area of the property, uh, which is why it needs a rezone, um, so that we can go ahead and issue that building permit. Uh, the LISA score did show that it is high value, but there is a lot of rocks on the property. It hasn't been used for farming in multiple decades. The house that was there was built in ninety-one. Do you have any, the, the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval unanimously. Uh, do you have any questions for me? The applicant is also here, if you have any questions for that.
Joseph, this question on the shape of the zoning area, is that common where you're not in squares for property line stuff?
Uh, it, it depends on the parcel. It's not, it doesn't happen too often. Uh, but sometimes there are cases where it's better to parcel it off, not at square angles.
Okay.
So they do have an easement when it was parceled off for that road access.
How soon is groundbreaking?
As soon as you say yes.
That's all I have, done everything off.
So it's been moved in seconded, closing hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Item number four, resolution to suspend the rules requiring the board supervisors to consider and vote on the proposed ordinance at two prior meetings.
So moved, second.
Moving seconded, please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Brant.
Yes.
Cartonback.
Yes.
Leland.
Yes. Item five, ordinance adoption, that ordinance amending ordinance number thirty-six as amended, Blackhawk County Iowa Agricultural Preservation Zoning Ordinance adopted February second nineteen ninety-nine by adding subsection number two nine nine to section six B, rezoning certain property as described in the above requests submitted by Bethany Fisher, and to consider the same for adoption, and if adopted, would be known as ordinance number seven seven dash two nine nine.
So moved, second.
Moving seconded, please answer as your name is called.
Cartonback.
Yes.
Brant.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Leland.
Yes. Go. I didn't mean we had to go, I just meant you can go do what you want to do. Item ten, work session, language for proposed local option sales and service tax ballot.
Okay, good morning again, Board. Uh, several weeks ago, I told you that I needed, I would like to update you on progress we're making on financing a new, uh, shop facility for our roads department at our, at our Longfellow site. Uh, several of us have been working, several departments, we've been working together on, uh, a way to get that done. I think one of our, uh, one of the easiest ways to finance this building would be to use local option sales and service tax money. You'd be able to repay, to pay for the structure with, with that method. That, of course, does require, uh, language change, a change in the language with the local option sales and service tax language. So I've given you, uh, the current language, that's, uh, up on the slides now. And I've also given you a handout with it, with that information on it. So you can see the current language simply says, uh, secondary road and bridge construction. And working with our county auditor and our county finance director, we believe that changing language to incorporate, uh, secondary road capital improvements. And while we're at it, we wanted to include maintenance, because so much of what we do is, you know, is considered maintenance. So we would like to propose that this be, uh, language that would be put forth on the November ballot.
Question is, I think the discussion we've had was, does it have to have something in there about building? Or is that all covered under capital improvements?
So I think they're.
Yeah, I think we believe that they are.
Okay.
We've looked at some other use, uh, language from other counties that have used this kind of funding to, um, do the same thing that the engineer's office wants to do. And so this is what is pretty typical for other counties.
Okay.
And they were trying to put up a list about two facilities.
Yeah, three other counties, um, in particular, have used this money for building specific purposes and have used capital improvement. Though, um, I think one of the reasons we wanted to use capital improvements, I don't want to speak for you, Kathy, but, um, we were trying to get away to a not, because we, just to take a step back, we have this on the ballot in twenty-three and with no sunset date. So meaning that anytime you want to change the usage, it does have to go on the ballot as a referendum. And so we didn't want to make it specific for this particular building, because then it just, it limits us to just doing that. And so if Kathy decides she want to do something else, then we have to bring it back on the ballot again. So this allows for this building, but also any future projects.
Yeah, thank you. That's a good point, Karen, that this would allow us in the future if, uh, we need to modify another, uh, building, existing buildings, or build additional buildings. You know, we have numerous buildings on the site and they are all aging. So this would allow for future improvements.
And so to just say, and.
And so to just say end maintenance, just means all, everything qualifies, whether it's road, bridges, building.
That was our, the way we're thinking about it, that.
I just.
Very cool that words off.
For clarity, that clarity is all I was thinking for anyone reading it. I'm thinking of the people that'll be voting.
Who I get?
Yeah.
Field experts agree that that makes sense.
And you're, and you're still planning on, in doing this kind of an educational forum or meetings, whatever, um.
Yes.
With social media or whatever too, maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, yes, with your approval of this language, yes, we would like to in a few months here, begin promoting the language and what we would like to, why we are asking for the change in the language.
Quick question for, uh, for Karen. This, this lang, the new language, if it were to fail, we wouldn't, we would keep the current language, correct?
Yes, it doesn't negate what's already in place.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
And if it were to fail, that timeline that's identified and those kinds of things, am I getting ahead of you?
This is a timeline just for putting it on the November ballot.
Okay.
I, if I remember, I'd have to go back to the code. I think you can't bring it back. There's a certain amount of time that you can't bring it back up on a ballot, and I can give that to you. Just ahead of, you know, if it were to not pass, what then our option is, but, um.
Go ahead, Karen, talk about.
Sure, um, and just a reminder, I don't want to, you certainly don't want to jinx us, but, uh, these, um, referendums have passed pretty unanimously. Uh, so I think the last one in twenty-three passed seventy thirty, so I don't have a lot of concern. This won't pass.
Karen, is this a simple majority, or is it a sixty-fourty?
Uh, great question. It's just a simple majority.
Thanks.
And, um, the lost, it's essentially its own special election, and it has a lot of nuances, having just gone through this in twenty-three. Um, the great, a couple of great things about bringing it on the November ballot is that it wouldn't be an additional cost to the county. We're already going to be administering, administering an election, so, um, no additional cost to the taxpayers, which is great. Uh, there are some different deadlines that come with this particular type of an election. And so the timeline up here, uh, the biggest one, just for the board to know, is that you would have to set the date of the election by August twelfth. Uh, so you'd want to get that on the agenda between now and then to set the date so that it can go on the November ballot. There's some extra publications that have to happen for this type of election, but our office will handle that as we administer the election. And if you approve the language today, then we would already have that next step done. But you could do it at the same time. You could set the day of the election and the language if you wanted to do all that at once. But that's, um, that's the deadline on that. A couple of things, I, I guess, just to note, so again, we did just have this on the ballot in twenty-three. With that current language going into effect January of twenty twenty-six. Um, if this passes, it can't go into effect within ninety days after the election. And you can only impose the tax in January and July. And so you would have that current language going into effect in January of twenty-six. And if this passes in November, it wouldn't be able to go into effect until July of twenty-six. So that's why we have brought Michelle into the conversation as well, just to make sure that we're keeping track of those pots. Essentially not spending any money on this new building until after July twenty-six. But Kathy didn't seem to think that we would even be starting that project before then.
Are we ready then to move this forward, like we can, set a date? So moved.
Okay, we don't have any action scheduled for today.
Oh.
It's work session, we're only, kind of, so we have to be next week.
But certainly, yeah, I mean, you guys, yeah, can do it. Um, yeah, we don't have to wait till August twelfth. That's just great for our office to plan accordingly.
I, I have one more question on the usage of the fund. I, I don't care, and you said you can't, we can't use it until twenty-six. Can we do any engineer, is, is engineering, uh, and planning a part of the language, or is that outside of the scope?
So we, in the past, we spent secondary road money, local property tax money, it's all in our secondary road fund. We've spent that money to, for example, the design and construction plans for our Delaware mill shop. We have budgeted for FY twenty-six for future years to pay for that design and construction architectural piece out of our secondary road fund. So I do think it would be eligible, once it's, the language is changed, but we've, we're currently paying for those types of services and products out of our secondary road fund.
Thanks.
Did that answer your question, David?
Yeah.
It did, thank you.
Someone may just put it on next week's agenda, I guess we'll create, we may get the right language and stuff.
Are there any more questions about the timeline or the language? So I was just gonna share with you what our next steps will be in the road department. So as you know, we are working with Envision. They were our, uh, consultants selected to work on the space needs, study for our, what our space and our needs would be for the entire department in the next, in the future. They are visiting our shop, they're working with employees to get, um, you know, just facts and figures to support future space needs. Uh, they are, have told us they should have information back to us, I believe, by September. We're hoping to use this information as we make presentations in August and September, October, to community groups. I'm, uh, more than willing to go out and speak to community groups. I've already got a spot with the Water and Rotary Club to talk to them. Uh, just to inform people about our need for the new building is my, uh, that's what I feel is our moves. If I can share that information about the needs, I'm hopeful that others will see the need for that, uh, new facility. We do have money budgeted in FY twenty-six to continue on the process with, uh, with, uh, selecting an architect to uh, putting plans together, final plans, et cetera. Uh, if the language were to change, then of course we would move forward. Tentatively, we don't have any, I can't tell you a date for when we would begin construction, because right now, our local option sales and service tax, we've committed that to, you, I've told you about our five-year plan. Right now, we have those funds committed to a five-year plan. Uh, if it's approved, we would like to change gears and tell you how we would be able to fund road and bridge construction for the next five years and start paying, repaying bonds with the local option sales and service tax, uh, money. So we are hopeful that, um, if the language were to pass, that in twenty-seven or twenty-eight, we could begin construction on a new building. Can I answer any, any questions at this time? We'll, uh, we'll keep you updated. We're busy with construction, but we feel in the fall, especially as we start working on FY twenty-seven budget, we will have more we'll have more of a chance to discuss how a five-year construction plan can be carried out in addition to, uh, finding the funding for a new building.
Thanks for doing the presentations. I do think people don't get out to those buildings. You don't see those buildings. You, no one knows what condition they're in, and sometimes the slides and things. It's very helpful.
Absolutely. Uh, happy to show any of you slides, take you out to the facilities, to, out to Longfellow, that type of thing. Just let me know.
Would you want any of us to accompany you at any of the public presentation events?
Uh, I, I would certainly welcome that. I think that of course will be up to your schedules. I will certainly let you know as we get some of those, uh, presentation times lacking.
Excellent. Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item eleven, any reports and information from the board?
None.
Any online, any updates, Chris or Tavis?
None here.
Okay, so we'll move on to closed session. We'll take a break in just a second. This is a resolution that pursuant to the provision of the Iowa Open Meetings Law by the authority of the Code of Iowa two one twenty-five one J, Blackhawk County Board Supervisors shall proceed into closed session for the purpose to discuss the purchase or sale of particular real estate, only where premature disclosure could be reasonably expected to increase the price, the governmental body would have to pay for that property. The minutes in the taped recording of a session closing, this paragraph shall be available for public examination when the transaction discussion is completed.
So moved. Second.
Moving in seconded, please answer as your name is called.
Paul.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Brandt.
Yes.
Curtinback.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes. So when Carol takes the tape, we're gonna take a break, a couple minutes, sir.
Yep.
Need a motion that the board supervisor's meeting in closed session be adjourned?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item thirteen, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
I'm moved.
Thank you. Moving seconded, on paper. We're adjourned.
Aye.